Okay, number one. Call to order and recording of members present and asking.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Slayer.
Here.
Kane.
And Hanson.
Here.
Create special meeting compliance statement?
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that notice of the time, date, and place of this special meeting was given at least forty-eight hours prior to this meeting to the county clerk of Woods County and was mailed or delivered to all of those who have made written requests and paid the request fee for notice of special meetings. I also certify that at least forty-eight hours prior to this special meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness my hand is twenty-seventh day of November, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you, Pam. Discussion and possible board action. Vote to accept any resignations received to date. Looks like we have one.
We turned it in at the last board meeting, but we didn't really vote on it or anything, so felt like that we needed to make sure that you all approved this at this point in time, so that we can go on with the search for the superintendent.
Well, like we said earlier, we really appreciate you and your service, and your best days are ahead of you, as you don't have all this stress and all the things going on.
Has not been a whole lot of stress, I promise you. It's a great community to be in, but we do need a motion and second to be able to vote on this.
You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
You move the second.
McDermott.
Aye.
Slayer.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parkhurst.
Yes, thank you.
We're gonna work you harder than ever the next year.
Absolutely.
Presentation by OSSBA to possibly assist Alva Public Schools in the search of superintendent for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year. Welcome.
Okay, very good. Excuse me, I think I've met all of you. Stephanie, I'm with Oklahoma State School Boards Association. Mr. Parkhurst called me a few weeks ago, letting me know that he had tendered his retirement letter and that you all wanted to hear a little bit about OSSBA services in regard to the superintendent's search process. So I currently serve as the Director of Executive Search Services for the School Boards Association. This is beginning my sixth year of doing this, and I actually need to probably take a look, but we're averaging, we average ten to fifteen searches a year, so I've conducted fifty to sixty searches in the time that I've been with OSSBA. The other thing that I think is a nice benefit to Oklahoma right now is I currently serve as the National Chair of the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, so school board associations across the nation have people such as myself, and I serve as the Chair of that group. So I represent forty states and about one hundred consultants across the nation, which really is nice because it allows us to share processes and practices, you know, that work well when it comes to doing the searches. And then particularly, we're seeing more and more out-of-state candidates in our applicant pools, and so that allows me to have a nice resource to call my colleague in Missouri or Texas and inquire about such a person. So in addition to working and finding people locally in the state of Oklahoma, then you'll have an opportunity to have some national exposure as well for your search. So what I have for you in each of your folders, on the left side, is just a little bit of information, particularly about the NAS, just the NAS affiliation that I just spoke with you about. And then the other piece, and I'll talk, go back to this a little bit later, but it's Baker U-Banks, a due diligent for executive educators. They are a firm that conducts background inquiries for us, and so I wanted you to have this information, that if this is a direction that you want to go, I can help facilitate that process. And we'll talk about that a little bit as we get further into the discussion today. And then on the right side of your folder, you have actually what our proposal is, and I'm gonna work off of the first page or the second page, which is the memorandum of understanding. I really just, I'd like for this to be informal, and I just wanna kinda take you through the steps and the process that OSSBA has established when it comes to conducting our searches. And as we get through to anything, then you all feel free to stop me and ask any questions. And each of the items that I'll talk about, there's further information attached behind that packet that you can have access to later as you want to review that. So one of the first things that we would do is make sure that we establish the proper timeline, and it's my understanding, Mr. Parkhurst, that you'll be here through June thirty, so you need to start, need a July one. Is that correct for the new person? And so what we will do is after we finish kinda working through this, we'll think about how we can back that up and really talk with you all about what you have in your minds about when you would like to have a decision made. I'm gonna imagine that you don't wanna wait till June to make a decision, you'd like to have that person sometime kinda middle of the spring, March or April, but we'll work through that as we work this to see kinda how that timeline flows.
Stephanie, on that, can you have two superintendents for the month of June?
No, but you could pay that person comparable, like a stipend, or a portion of that person's salary if they wanted to come in and share time. That happens.
'Cause we'll have a late-June board meeting to go over the closure and everything, and that may be, you know, two days within that thirtieth or something like that, and I may not be in the country.
Right, right. And once you, once you do the, once we get all of these things in place and you actually have made the hire than normally, and you've agreed on what that person's salary is going to be, usually it's just, you know, like a daily rate to have that person come in throughout those times. While we're on that subject, the other thing for you to keep in mind would be occasionally, if that person is able to have days built up where they currently are, vacation days or personal days, whatever, occasionally they may want to come and spend a couple days even late in spring, you know, to meet the teachers before they leave, to meet the other administrators, kinda tour the facilities and things of that nature. So that's certainly acceptable to you, just would agree with that, with that person that you hire. So when it comes to marketing and advertising, that's one of the things I think that we really do well and build the marketing materials around the uniqueness of what's happening in Alva. I would work with the board president, as well as your central office staff, to gather, you know, your logo and your key information and key specific things about your district. And then we have our communication and marketing team, they develop a webpage off of our website. So you would go to our search page, and you'd see that you were looking, excuse me, that we had an opening in Alva Public Schools, they click on that, and then a webpage comes up, advertising and talking about all the things that are happening in Alva. So it's really a nice opportunity to promote all of the good things that you have going on here, and of course, you know, get that out there and put it forward in such a way that will make someone want to click further and be able to actually apply for that position on that place. While we're talking about that, through the application process, we do everything through an online application process. So all of the candidate materials, their application, their resume, cover letter, we ask for a proof of valid certification, Oklahoma certification. So all of those things are uploaded into their account or their pool of applicants for Alva. And then each of you, as a board member, will have your own password and access to that pool of applicants. So as those applicants come in, you may look at them in real time. There is also a way for you to print those out, if you prefer to print things rather than look at them online, you have the ability to do that. But we have just found that that is a much better solution rather than trying to chase the paper. So everything is online, you all can print them as you want, and then it doesn't put you in that bind of, you know, I only have a day to look through a stack of applications, you're looking through them as they go.
Do you, excuse me, do you just have a certain group that you have access to, just the board members, or how, do we have, does anyone have access to that, that we want to have access to, looking at the pool of applicants?
It would be the board members.
The board members.
Right. And it's just, it's a confidentiality issue, so we just keep that really tight and locked down. I have access to it from the administrator's side, so if you'll have trouble with your account or something like that, I can help on that end. But otherwise, it's just the board members that have access to that.
Okay, great.
Okay? So one of the other things that we'll do is just talk with you all about the qualifications and characteristics that you're looking for in the next person that is going to be here, so that we can help identify that person. We will recruit for you. If we feel like that we have some people in mind or know of some other people that have the skill set that you're looking for, we will certainly reach out to them on your behalf. Excuse me. And then we'll market very, very heavily, of course, in the state of Oklahoma, we'll hit, you'll hit the surrounding regional states very hard just because of your location, and then you'll have some national exposure too. So we push that out hard and work hard on your behalf to really try and gather the most qualified applicant pool that you can possibly have. I will say, once you get in and start looking through the applicants, just like any other job, you're gonna have some that you're wondering, wow, they don't even have any education experience, why do they think they can do this? Why did they even apply? Well, you know, we can't keep people from applying, but again, that's your job as a board member to know who has applied, what is out there, and then to be able to make the decision about who you want to interview.
So if we get a hundred people applying for this, they're all gonna be there, you don't go in and take some out because they're not qualified or anything?
No. We can, I will, I can go through and kinda help sort and filter some, but the board members will see all of them. And we, from what I can understand, before I came on board, that that was not the practice. From what I can understand, at one point in time, the person that did the search would come up and say, you need to take a look at these five people. And Sean and I just have a very, very different philosophy about that. You all are elected board members to represent your community, and it's not our job as OSSBA to make the decision on who we think you should and shouldn't look at. So that's why we leave that open to that degree. I will provide you a rubric for which you can be looking through and look for some key things, which will tell you pretty quickly how much time you need to spend looking at that applicant. You're gonna be able to tell pretty quickly if they meet the criteria that you want or not, based on what the rubric that we set up. But it's very important for us, for you all to know, and for your community to know, that this is your decision. I mean, our role is to facilitate that process. We're gonna do the heavy lifting, we're gonna do the legwork, we're gonna do the advertising, the marketing, we're gonna take care of making sure all the materials are in from the applicants, helping you all work within the system. But when it comes right down to making that decision, that's your decision, not our decision. So again, we'll post the opening and manage those applications through the online application management system. I've mentioned that we'll recruit candidates as we need to, we respond to any vacancy questions that people have. I can provide you with a sample contract that's written from board members' perspective versus superintendent's perspective, so that you have an idea that you can look at your contract and then look at another sample that OSSBA has and decide if you want to add some additional things to that, or if you want to adjust that in any way for the new person coming in. And then I will also provide you a salary schedule, comparable salary schedule with other schools of like size, to see where you all are in that range. So that will help you when it comes time to negotiating with the person that you hire, so that you can see if you're in line with other schools of similar size.
But the board can't post a job opening with Oklahoma School Board without going into the contract with you all?
We have a free, we have a free job board that you can do that as well.
Okay.
So once we've reviewed that, the application period and the search process, then we get to that interview stage. I usually like, and again, this just depends on kind of what your timeline is, on when we're gonna get everything up and going, I would say four to six weeks would be about the window of when we would leave the application period open. And again, what, probably what you'll see normally when that happens is you have a really strong flurry of activity at the beginning, of people that, you know, that may know that this is coming, the word has gotten out that he is retiring, they're looking for that. You'll have a little bit of a lull for a few weeks, and then you're gonna have another hard flurry of activity towards the end, of people continuing to work on the materials but turning them in right before you close that. Once that application period is closed, and you all have had an opportunity, again, as I say, to look through those materials as those come in, your homework is gonna be to review and kinda rank those as they come in, based on that rubric and the things that you all feel are gonna be important. And then I will come back up, and we'll work through a process so that as an entire group, you have an idea of this is the first group of people that you would like to begin interviewing. So we go through a review process of those applications and come to consensus on that first group of people that you would like to host those interviews. I will, based on the things that you all tell me are important and kinda your hot buttons and the things that are really driving you all as a district now, we can really focus in on interview questions that deal with some of your hot topics and some of your hot buttons, to make sure that we're as specific as we can be with those interview questions, and you can really get down to the heart of the matter of the things that you all feel like are important for you here in Alva. One of the things I failed to mention is we also have an online survey that we can make available to your stakeholders, for them to provide input on the qualities and characteristics that they feel like are gonna be important in the next superintendent, so it's a nice way to involve your community through an online survey, which will provide you with quite a bit of information as well. What I like to do with that information is, once that information is collected, we collect that anonymously through the OSSBA service. And then once that information is gathered and I get that tabulated and recorded, I send that out to you all as board members, so you'll have a really clear picture of, well, this is what our community expected, this is the kind of person that they are interested in, leading the district going forward.
Is that the only method you do, that you survey the stakeholders?
No, it's not. So the second opportunity, and the questions are different, so the online survey questions are, most of them are like or scale, or it's actually forced choice, so they may have a list of fifteen characteristics and they have to choose their top five, so it's gonna really narrow that down. The other option is face-to-face community forums, where I come up to the community, there's an initial expense with that, that's five hundred dollars plus my travel expenses, but I spend the entire day meeting with your stakeholders. So normally, how it works out, just because of the way school schedules are, is I would meet with your administrators, and then right after school, perhaps, elementary teachers and then secondary teachers. And then make sure that we have a time for parents and community members. It also has worked really well if you all have some naturally built-in business groups, Rotary, Alliance, Chamber, I'm not sure what types of organizations you have here, ministerial alliance even, so any kinda naturally formed groups, if they meet at lunch, say, and if I can be on the agenda, then that's an opportunity to get their input there. So again, that's just another place for you to gather stakeholder feedback on the things that are important to them and the hopes that they have for the community going forward. And then with that, you receive an executive summary of all of those comments and thoughts that we made from there. Okay? Questions, that is your question?
That's great, thank you.
Okay. Good. So all of those things can be done in conjunction with us getting it open. I would encourage us to get it open as soon as we possibly can, particularly with the holidays coming up. I think people are making decisions right now, they're gonna start making decisions in December and January on if they're planning on coming back to their current school, or if they know that things, that they're looking for another opportunity, they're gonna start making those decisions. And so Christmas and Thanksgiving is a really great time, because they have time off, you know, they don't feel like, they're not sitting behind their desk looking for another job, they're sitting at home, looking at the things that are out there, and will take the time to fill out the information and get things posted. So that's something for us to consider as we think about the timeline. And again, I've talked a little bit about the interview guidelines, the couple of different options you have there, I'll certainly help and support you with the interview questions, really talk with you about what you can and can't ask. Try and keep it as, I hate to use the word scripted, but scripted with some autonomy, basically, so it's just, you just need to kinda stay in this, this is the area you need to stay in, you don't need to go out over here, 'cause that could cause you some issues with things that you should or shouldn't be asking, but I'll go through all of those. Another service, if you would like, is I can come up and serve as your concierge, basically, which would be, that would allow me to come in and meet the candidates, escort them into where you're gonna be interviewing them, escort them out, put the next person back in, so I can physically be here to walk you through that process if that's something that you have an interest in doing as well. That is an additional fee, five thousand, or excuse me, five hundred plus the travel.
Whoa.
Five hundred.
That goes our sixty percent administrative cost.
Five hundred plus travel to come up and do that, but a lot of school districts really find that to be very helpful, 'cause the way that we structure that is, and I usually won't sit in on the interviews, but it gives us time after you finish that interview to come in, and I can facilitate a conversation between you all, we can talk about what worked, did that person hit the hot buttons, what's your interest in going forward, you know, what were the things that you were really interested about, you know, so that gives you time to kinda have some of those little mini conversations as you finish up the interview process with each candidate. So that's another option for you. That doesn't need to be decided today, we can decide that later.
Stephanie, what do you suggest? Ten interviews and then cut it down to two or three, or you gotta cut them down to whatever the board decides on the top four and bring them back?
Mm-hmm.
So at least two interviews?
At least. And it usually, it really just depends on the strength of your applicant pool. I mean, I have had Norman Public Schools as an example, we did Norman last year, they interviewed ten, that was their starting group. The year before that, I did, you know, Sand Springs and Morris, and they started with six. So it really, it really just depends on your applicant pool.
So the board can make that decision on the number of applicants that they see, and they go over, so they could go.
Oh, yeah.
And determine six, seven, five, whatever.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
And then, so the normal process of how that works is the first interview is usually forty-five minutes to an hour. And again, we'll discuss that as we get closer to that point, and really think about the interview questions, we wanna make sure that that person has enough time to be able to answer those questions. And usually, after that first round of interview, you can get it narrowed down to two or three. I've had districts that have said, they've gone through the first round of interviews, and they've come back and said, it's this one, period, it's this one. Okay, then let's bring that one person back, make sure you feel really good about that. If not, we can bring a few more in. So again, you all are in control of that process, and my job is to help you play devil's advocate some. Have you thought about this? Have you thought about this? Facilitate that process so that you all can get where you wanna go.
And each time, it's gonna have to be a special board meeting?
Yes. Interviews are held in executive session. Oklahoma, we are fortunate that we will not, we are not required to release names of the applicants, nor the names of the interview candidates, and we are, we are very, very firm, people that work through us, I say the applicants that work through OSSBA know that confidentiality is a big part of what it is that we bring to the table. With that, you know, we certainly do not want leaks. A perfect example of that will be, more than likely, you will have applicants that are superintendents elsewhere. I would not suggest that the person that is applying, they make that decision how they want to with their board, but most of the time, they will not let their board know, their current board know, that they've applied for another job until they perhaps get the second interview.
Is it, I mean, what's the normal interview procedure? Are they held off-premise? Are they in a secure location of some sort?
It's however you want to handle that. I mean, I've had it, I've had, again, I've had it done both ways, that you do it in central office, or that you do it at the chamber, I've had some held at the chamber before, I've had some held in hotels, conference room befores. You have to post, I mean, you still have to post the agenda that you're having, the interviews, and so that's not gonna completely protect the person that's coming in from not, you know, being seen by someone in the media, but occasionally it helps.
Well, I should do that.
Yeah, again.
Grab them in the back door.
This is actually, this is really, actually, I'm guessing that goes right outside. Yeah, this is actually a pretty good setup, you know, so what you'd wanna do is we, if you wanted to have it here, you know, we'd have like a holding room, you know, someone would greet them, kinda hold that person there, escort them in here to the interview, and have them go out that door, so that the new person coming in, they don't bump into each other. So again, we'll talk about that protocol and what that looks like at that time, too. Okay? And once again, you all can make the decision on how to do this. I have some very open-ended reference questions, and we'll talk about the protocol of when and who is gonna make the reference calls. You can certainly make those calls with all of your applicants in your first round. A lot of times, boards will choose to wait and make that after they narrow it down. You know, it's easier to call three people about one person than three people on six people, you know, six applicants. So, but again, we'll just, you all just will guide me and make that decision on how you want that to look, on what those reference checks look like. I suggest that you all, again, make those calls rather than me, so that you're getting that information firsthand. And I'm not trying to relay to you, well, their tone of the voice, they got a little nervous when we talked about this, you know, that's better for you to hear, and I'm not gonna be able to explain that as well. So I will encourage you all to make those reference calls yourself. We do include in our service a very broad background inquiry, and if you will look on page two, item number eight, there's a note there that says background review reports, and if you look at option one, option one is included in the base price of our search fee. And so it's going to give you a nationwide criminal search, known sex offender, social security, and previous address verification, and OIG Inspector General check. So that's included in your price of six thousand, which is the cost of the search. If you choose option two, which is much deeper, if you'll flip to the next page, item number six, it says standard plus package includes this, these are the reports or the inquiry that you would receive if you choose to use Baker U-Banks, which is, information is over here on the left side. And that's just strictly our cost, we're facilitating that, they'll charge five hundred and fifty dollars to do the in-depth background review. And then those are the items there. And again, you can look at your Baker U-Banks information on the left side to make that decision on what you want to do there.
So the not in-depth background search is in the end of the cost of the six thousand dollars.
Correct.
If you wanna take it to another level, it's in addition.
Five fifty per candidate. Five fifty per candidate. And I have seen, we have had, frankly, more and more districts are using the in-depth service, just because of some of the environment that we're in, and some of the things, unfortunately, that have come to light with some of the administrators, and not having the proper credentials, or they're having credentials from an institution that's no longer accredited, or, you know, things of that nature that reflect poorly on the school district for not knowing that and finding that out later, the fact. So we have more and more districts that are choosing to do that, but again, you need to be selective about that and who you want to perform that on, just simply because of the cost. But I have seen those reports, and there is no stone left unturned. I will tell you, it is pretty impressive what they're able to find. It's scary, but it's impressive.
Five hundred and fifty dollars per candidate?
Five fifty per candidate.
So if we bring in five candidates, we're paying...
Right, which you wouldn't, you wouldn't do that on your first group, you would say that really probably your final two candidates, or your final one candidate. You know, you could do, you could do the cursory one, and then even make an offer and say, you know what, but we're gonna do one more background check on one person, and we'll approve, you know, we'll approve and sign off on hiring you once that's done. So we've got, you've got some flexibility there, but I just wanted to point that out, that that's an option for you.
Stephanie, on your Facebook, would that be under social media review only, or does that come under personal profile summary in the standard plus package?
Right. So if you look at item number six on that page, additional services on a fee basis, there are two, oh, there's actually four, but they're kinda grouped together. So your standard plus package is five fifty per candidate and includes all those So your standard plus package is five fifty per candidate and includes all those bullets. And then you have this option of the media review, which is the news and social media for an additional seven, for the news media only or the social media only. So you have an option of what you would want to do there.
But the social media would be Facebook. It's not covered back up here in your standard under personal profile summary?
Correct. Correct.
Like buying a car. What options?
It is, lots of, well, you know, we just, and again, that we, we just want you to see that you have, you have control of the process. I mean, we are here to meet your wishes and facilitate this to make it go as smoothly as possible. The, the main thing that we want you focused on is setting the criteria for, for the kind of person that you want. We want you to be successful in going through the interview process and then selecting the right candidate. I mean, that's, those are the three main things that we want you all to be thinking about, and we'll manage and, and take care of the other, the other behind the scenes types of things.
So if the board votes to approve Oklahoma School Board, they could sign the general contract and then add anything later on
Yes.
To that?
Yes.
This is not committed to all of these things?
No.
Just a general contract at this point in time?
Yep, yep. So if you all choose to, at this point, if you flip back over to that front page, give me a pause for just a minute and see if I have a tissue. My allergy's just gonna go crazy.
I'll go get one.
I, I got it. I do. I carry it, you know, it's like when you have allergies in Oklahoma, you come prepared. Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
And so if you look back at the memorandum of understanding, it basically, everything item one through eight is six thousand, is six thousand, with the exception of item eight would be, you can see there that for an additional fee, you could do the, the additional background inquiry if you choose to do that. And then the additional services and the costs of those are down below, items number one through seven.
On the general, up here, one through eight, no printed applications because it says down here, printed application material is twenty dollars?
Correct. So everything is actually
So it'd be online, though, and they could print from that? Do they have the right to print?
Oh, yeah.
From, from online?
Yeah, we just, we just don't, it's just not feasible for us to be in the print application and try and get into all the business. You know, because a lot, a lot of times, and this happens, is someone will submit, someone will submit an application, and in the meantime, this happened last year, they received like a national, they received a national award for something that they had done. So they wanted to go back in, right? Change their resume and include that. Well, if you have that online, you're going to see those, you're going to see those updates versus if we print it, that saves us from printing it multiple times.
Okay.
So that's just kind of a broad overview of the services that we provide and how OSSBA can support you all. What other questions do you have about the process or how we can work together?
You mentioned that you assisted Norman Public Schools last year. Have you worked with smaller schools?
Oh, yes. In fact, last year, I worked with Maple, which is a K-8, White Leaf, which is a K-8. We have, we've worked with, you know, populations, student populations of a hundred up to, you know, thirty thousand.
And that same price is the same no matter what side of the school it is? It's about the same amount of work, isn't it, Paul?
It's, it can be a little, it can be a little bit more like, for instance, I think with Norman, we met with the board more frequently, and so we had some per-meeting costs in there as we worked through that, but that was something that we had agreed upon upfront.
Can you pick and choose out of here? I mean, can you do some of the additional services without doing the whole thing? I mean, it's just a package, okay? There's no piecemealing it at all?
No, no, because really, really what we found is this process, it works.
Yeah.
And it, it works going through systematically the way that we have that set up, and, and we've worked really hard to maintain the integrity of the process, and we're afraid by piecemealing it out. It could be detrimental to the program.
What is Oklahoma State School Board recommend on the timeframe? I saw in there four months. So are you looking at April board meeting to determine superintendent at this point in time?
Mm-hmm. I think, I think, I think that'd probably be right. A lot of that frankly depends on if we try and work in a face-to-face community forum. How long have you been superintendent here?
Just five.
Okay.
Been here thirty-seven years.
Okay. Have, have you all done anything like that in the past, which is reaching out to your stakeholders?
Not in my lifetime.
Okay, so that, that might be, that might be a nice thing for you to do. Sometimes that can, well, it's not going to delay the process any, but it can certainly put you out where you're within your four to six weeks because just finding a day, right? Finding the right day that you don't have a G and ballgames or all the other events to be able to put that on there. But, yeah, I would, I would say this is essentially the first part of December. I think you, I think we could hustle and get it open in probably within two to three weeks, which is going to put us right before the Christmas break, leave it open all the way through January, maybe the first couple of weeks of February, you know, and then you start through that interview process. So I would say April would be the latest. There's a possibility that you might be able to have a decision to hire someone by March, but I would, I would, I would shoot for April, and if, if we can move it up a little bit into March, that would be good.
It seems like in other entities, now, where we've done online surveys, they haven't been very well received. I mean, people aren't really good at going on and doing that in our, in our community. There will be some, I mean, the age group of, of some of us and younger, but the on, the community forum, you know, might be something we really probably, if we're going to do, include the community forum, would probably be something we would want to do. Give them an opportunity to come, basically.
And, and that's really, it's really hard to say on, on who comes and who doesn't. You know, I've, I've had forums that I've had two hundred people and I've had some that I've had two.
But your, your forum, I mean, you do teachers and
Right.
Administrator. I mean, it's not just
Correct.
People like us in the community.
Correct, right.
It's our community within as well.
Right, right.
I like that.
Right, so it's your stakeholders within your, within your walls
Right.
As well as outside.
Yeah, I like that.
And, and you know, really what we have found is that your internal stakeholders are perhaps more appreciative of, of having a voice than perhaps your community stakeholders will be. I get comments all the time from administrators or teachers saying, oh, my gosh, thank you. Just, thank you for letting us tell you what we think because we're not asked that very often. And so it really, it makes them feel valued. It makes them feel like they're a part of the process without having, without having the decision-making, which is what you all will have as the board members. So, other, other questions about the process, how we would work together? So how many of you have gone through a search before, superintendent search before? None of you? No?
Mr. Barkers retired as interim, and then we hired him as the real deal.
Okay.
There's more.
I don't know, Lynn, I don't think the board's had in the thirty-seven years I've been here an outside search. I think they've just taken applications and the board has taken it internally, all that process.
When you have Stephanie here when you were hired?
No.
No?
I don't think so.
No.
Because I thought I'd heard a speech like this.
Well, she came and gave a speech on
Strategic planning.
Strategic planning.
Okay, that's
And we taught
Two months ago.
There are community forums involved in that also.
Right, okay.
So that's probably what's triggering your mind.
But Stephanie, I don't, I, honestly, I can't remember the thirty-seven years that we ever did an outside search. It's always been internally and the board has taken care of it and so forth. Now, they could have had some open forums or things of that nature that I wouldn't remember, but I know I've interviewed four, five different times and it was just with the board.
Okay.
On the community forums, is the online survey part of the six thousand or is that, what, what is the cost of the online?
It's part of the, it's part of the six.
Okay, so that would be free if we signed up, and then if we had the forum, it'd be five hundred dollars plus your travel?
Plus my travel for the day.
Up to five per day, up to five forms per day.
Physically, that's about all I can handle. They're about thirty to forty-five minutes each, and, and you know, for that, we'll just, I'll need someplace with Wi-Fi, a screen of projector, so, and it can be one place and people can come to me or I can go to other people, so we'll get that worked out.
Can a survey made especially for teachers and administrators with this six thousand?
And elaborate on that a little bit.
The only people that could fill out that survey would be our teachers and administrators?
No, it's for the entire community.
It supports that.
So, it's for your, your entire community, so we've had
But you can't make one just for them?
No, and it's the way that it's designed, you're going to, it's the same information that, that we're going to get. Where, where you can really get personal and gather more personalized information is through the face-to-face forums. So the questions are going to be the same at each of the forum, but still you get a different, you get a different tone and a different feel from
Do you video those and then go back and
The personalization.
Put together your program, or you try to just take notes?
I, I take, I take real copious notes, and we actually conduct the forums through Poll Everywhere, which is an online service, and the participants are texting in their answers, so that it's an opportunity for them to be anonymous, which I find to be really, really important because particularly if there's something, you know, occasionally you're going to have that person that's just had a really, really rotten bay, and, and they may feel like they need to vent a little bit, so you know, that way they don't have, it's, it's going to be put up there, so that will either, most of the time, that'll kind of head that off, and so you don't get into a gripe session. It's just very, very focused. So we stay away from that so that it can just stay very positive and just be thinking about what's going, going to happen in the future.
You started to tell us you would, we would publish that in the paper?
Right, so it's like the online survey. So with the online survey, you will get a, you'll get a link, a link to the survey, and so you'll put it on, I'll ask you to put it on your website. Do you, are you the web tech or is someone?
No.
Are you, who's the web tech?
Yeah.
So I just
Carol.
Okay, so I'll just work with your central office staff and say, this is the, these are when it's, this is when it's open, you know, open it on this day, leave it open for this long. You, I would encourage you to send it to your newspaper so that they can publish it, and then any of your internal networks. So what, so what types of business groups do you have in the community?
Rotary, Colonnus, and then probably Minister Alliance are probably the three biggest. Would that be right, Lynn?
Yep.
Okay.
And Rotary and Colonnus will meet together.
That would be great.
Maybe we'll do those on special occasions.
That, that would be, that would be really excellent. So then, so that kind of solves that problem of that forum, that we can get all of them in the room together, but then for the online survey, you'd want to send it to your president of the chamber, the president of Rotary, whoever is in charge of the Minister Alliance, and have them send it to their network of people. You know, so it's like we just try and find as many outlets as we can to gather as much information as we can.
That's good. More questions? That means you've done a good job presenting, with not lots of questions.
Well, I'm hope, I'm trying to answer. I've done this enough that I usually know what is going to be asked, so I try and cover it the first time around, but I'm happy to elaborate on anything I need to elaborate on.
Do you feel comfortable making a decision? Discussion of possible board action, vote to approve contract with the OSSBA to assist Alba Public Schools in the search for superintendent for the 2018-19 school year.
If you don't feel comfortable at this time, you can table it. We could take it on at the December board meeting if you want more.
Have more discussion?
More discussion and so forth.
We meet on the
Fourth?
Fifth?
Maybe. So that's a week from today.
If we did that, you said it took two weeks to get it up and going?
Yeah, it'll, it'll take at least, it'll take at least two, per ti, yes.
So that would be right before Christmas break?
Mm-hmm. And what, you know, what I don't know is what my marketing and communications
Can we go ahead and post it on Oklahoma School Board site?
It, oh, in the interim?
Yes.
Well, the prob, you could, yes, you could, but they would, if you decide to go with our services and we use the online process, then they would need to reapply through that process. So those people would, you would need to notify those people.
To, to apply again. Do our internal candidates, are they added to the system? Do they have to reapply?
Anybody that's going to apply needs to apply through the system.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
What do you think as a new board member?
I think it's important to get it right. I think it's incredibly critical, decision to get it right. I don't have a good feel on the cost versus what's within reason. So that's kind of my sticking point on yes or no. I think the service sounds very good and it would help in getting it right, but what does that cost? Put us on things?
I will tell you that I know it sounds like a lot of money, but we can't afford to do it. It's not going to hurt us, so that's something that you probably don't know yet as being a new board member.
And, and I can say just nationally, like I said, there are forty-six in my national group. We are the least expensive. In fact, I think the next group up is ten thousand dollars. So, and outside firms, thirty to forty to fifty thousand dollars. So, I mean, we, we are, we see this as a school boards association, as a member service. We can't do it for free, but we're trying to keep the costs as, as low as we can as value-added benefit to those, to the districts that we serve.
That's what you tell them, fifth?
You want to postpone until the fifth?
Fourth.
Fourth?
Fourth, whatever.
That's a week.
As long as that gives us time to get it.
To kind of digest what we've heard and
Okay, then
Any motion to?
No, you take no mo, no action at this point in time.
Correct.
We're very interested. We appreciate it a lot.
You bet.
We are
We appreciate your time coming out here again.
We, we are Northwest Oklahoma people that
Very concerned.
That take a little time to make decisions and usually hopefully do the right ones.
Okay.
And you've done an excellent job at presenting
Thank you.
And offer an excellent service for us.
Thank you.
So I hope you'll, I imagine you're going to hear something positive, but we'll wait and see.
Okay, that sounds great. So you all can just let me know where we go from there, and then there'll be a series of things that we'll need to follow up on to really kind of kick things off and get things going.
Can you check back with your, you mentioned about your, your media people or your PR people? If, is, is it possible if we waited till the fourth that they could get it out?
Yeah, when I, I'll be in the office later this week, so I can certainly see kind of what their, what their holiday plans are.
I think so, too, because we, you know, a week's a week, but a week's not critical either. Could they get right on it if we decided to do it?
What additional information would they need from us to put that packet together?
It's just all the marketing materials, and then I need to be able to have a conversation with you all in regard to the qualifications and characteristics you're looking for because I personalize the application. So it's not just simply a, you complete the application, So it's not just simply a, you complete the application. I, I like to put in very specific questions that the person needs to respond to, so that you all can have a feel for if that person's going to meet your need. Finance would be an example. So I would ask them to address the fact or provide evidence that they have a strong financial background, particularly as it relates to X, Y, Z. Maybe you have some bond issues coming up, maybe you're in the middle of a bond issue. But, you know, the conversation I need to have with you after it is approved, and this could be what would slow it down and not let us have it open prior to Christmas, would be me having a chance to visit with you to get a sense of what those qualities and characteristics are, what are kind of the hot issues that are happening in Alva, that we want to make sure that we address through two questions in the application. And then also for us to be thinking about people that we can recruit and the things that you're going to be looking for when you go through those applications themselves.
So we have to give you a list of how, you know, qualifications, what we kind of want in a new superintendent, some of the issues in which are happening in Alva that we want them to address, like you said, bond issues or...
I just kind of, what are, what are the hot things? What are the hot issues that are happening right now that regardless of anything else, you knew this person, you need to know this person has skills in this area?
So if we approved it on December the fourth, then we'd have to go through that process with you, and then we'd have another process before we could get it posted?
We can have, we can have that through phone call.
Okay.
Yeah, we can have that through phone calls, through a conference call, we can do it a variety of different ways.
And we can, do we have to meet in a meeting to do that, or can you do it individually?
No, we can do it individually.
Okay, makes sense.
Yeah, there's no meeting for that. It would be, it would be helpful, particularly when it comes to kind of your hot issues, that you all have a consensus about that. So perhaps if you make that decision to use us, then you all make that decision yourselves about the couple of things that you really want to know about, that we can include those. And when I talk with you, you can just relay that for the group. But that, that's a really important piece, and I think that's something that we do very differently, and the boards have really come to appreciate that, because you, you learn a couple of things. First, you learn about their writing style. Can they, can they put a complete sentence together? Are they using proper grammar? Are they using proper punctuation, which is very important to someone that holds them in this position? And are they spouting theory that they just learned from the last course that they took? Or is it real live? This is what I've done. I mean, I want evidence. I want you to be able to demonstrate to me how you have handled this. What does this look like? So that you know that they're the real deal.
So in the meantime, the board could start working on their ideas, give it to me, and then if we voted on Tuesday, then we could send you a list...
Sure.
On Tuesday, and email it to you and get that started.
Sure.
Okay.
We have homework.
Got homework.
Yep, absolutely. Okay?
All right.
Are we good?
Stephanie, we appreciate you.
Absolutely, absolutely. You all feel free, my card is in here, so feel free to give me a call or email me with any questions that you might have.
But we do need a motion to adjourn.
Vote to adjourn.